Welcome to the November 28th City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Bennet to walk us through the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. Today's work session, under the agenda items, we have a fire department update. We have the chief, Worms, are with us. He's going to walk you through kind of just some overall updates about where we are, some processes that we participated in to help increase ISO and then participate in the Safer Grant, so give you kind of an update there. And then, we had a circumstance, a resolution, a matter that came before council a number of months ago that involved the Historic Preservation Commission. There was some interest in kind of understanding how it worked, what those principles are. So Tom Martin is going to engage you on that. Then business item briefings are those items that are going to be positioned later for a vote by City Council. So tonight, there are a couple of those, and a little bit of housekeeping, if it's okay, Mayor. May we move the citywide youth curfew up? Because one of the participants, one of the people that are participating with us is Commonwealth's attorney, and she has a date, a time specific that she has to leave council chambers. So if that's okay with you, move the last business item briefing, which is the citywide youth curfew, up to the first one. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And then, before I turn it back to you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make some announcements, new additions to the team, if you will. We have Mr. Kevin Page, who is here with us. Kevin joined the city in October of '23 as superintendent for the Lynchburg Regional Juvenile Detention Center. He hails from Orange County, Virginia, and holds a BS in Criminal Justice and over 22 years of experience working with adult and juvenile offenders. He worked in various juvenile correction centers within the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice, such as Culpeper, Chestfield Beaumont, and Prince William. His most recent position was the Assistant Superintendent for the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services. Mr. Page states he is passionate about working with the youth to help them become productive citizens of the community. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Page. Next new member to our team is Ms. Jennifer Reeves. She has a long history of public service, including retiring from College Station, Texas after 23 years working as a city planner. She has worked also for the city of Roanoke in the Solid Waste Division as supervisor managing collection inspectors, the dispatch center, and the downtown waste management services. While in Roanoke, Jennifer served on Budget Committee and made numerous presentations to citizens on Roanoke's Solid Waste Program. She is with us here in Public Works at our waste management capacity. Jennifer, thank you for being here. Last new team member isn't all that new. Mr. Tom Martin is a native of Central Virginia. He has a BS in Urban Studies and Planning from VCU. He has a certificate in Local Government Management for Virginia Tech. In December, he will celebrate 30 years with the city. Whole time, he's been with the planning or Community Development Department, started as a planning technician, then GIS Planner/Analyst, Senior Planner, City Planner, and has been serving as the Acting Community Development Director since 2022. We've taken the acting off. We've given him the full job. We're excited. Tom and his wife Valerie have four children, and their first grandchild is due in February of 2024. So welcome, Tom. With that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our work session agenda items. Fire Department update, Fire Chief Greg Worms, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I want to share with you a little bit of an update about the fire department and some projects that we've been working on, and sort of a path forward for some new initiatives that we have going on. So I'd like to share with you first about our call volume from last year. Our annual report has been out for a number of months now. In 2022, we had more than 19,000 calls for service, and to date, we are sitting at 16,000, nearly 900 calls for service. So our call volume trend continues to be steady, if not increasing. Obviously, at the end of the year, for our annual report, we'll provide an update about our total call volume. It's worth noting that more than 80% of our calls are EMS-related, and so we're very busy on the EMS side of the division of what we do. The fire side, about 20% accounts for things like car accidents, structured fires, other rescues, a number of other hazmat incidents, and calls of the like. One of the things that we've done new to our department is change our thermal imaging cameras on the fire side of the house. And so our cameras, the thermal imaging cameras, are the cameras that we use to detect hot spots, look for victims in dark spaces, sort of think of it like forward-looking infrared. It's similar in its design. And so we've recently replaced all of our cameras across the entire department, as well as, thanks to this council, this body, we've been able to replace all of our air packs. And we're hopeful that as the rest of the equipment for the air packs come in, that we'll provide training to all of our staff after the first of the year, and those packs will be on the apparatus. So if you remember, those packs replaced the packs that we've had for a number of years now and had met their useful life. We had not only obtained a grant for the replacement of those air packs, but you also contributed a substantial contribution in order to make that project come to fruition. The last thing I'd mention about the fireside is some of our new training programs. So we are sort of changing a little bit about how we're doing training. It's not what we're training on, it's how we are conducting our training and subsequently documenting that training. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a few minutes, as we talk about some initiatives moving forward. Our training is solid, but certainly our training staff, with a number of uniformed staff that we have now, as well as some of our support staff, are certainly overwhelmed with the amount of work that they do. On the EMS side of the house, I'm proud to share with you that our ultrasound program, which we previously reported to use several months back, is in full swing. We have now a number of ultrasound units, so we do ultrasound in people's homes now, which is amazing technology. We're also able to share that technology sort of via telemedicine style with the hospital ahead of the patient's arrival and ahead of our arrival. They can also provide us feedback with how treatment is going when we're using the ultrasound equipment. Last, two weeks ago, I'm sorry, we started using whole blood. So our EMS supervisor carries blood now for all trauma patients. We started that earlier in November. We're the first in the region, and as far as I know, only one of three departments in the entire Commonwealth that carry a blood product. And we're very proud of that, because it really shows our initiative and our willingness to think outside the box and use state-of-the-art technology and cutting-edge equipment in order to provide the best possible outcome we can to our citizens. In addition to the best possible outcome, we also have a continued return of spontaneous circulation rate of greater than 50%. And as we've talked about before, again, if you're in cardiac arrest here in the city of Lynchburg, you are 50% more likely to survive that event than you are elsewhere in our region, and that is about twice the national average. So we're certainly, certainly very proud of that. Couple of items to note from last year and sort of ongoing into this year. Our current turnout time, so that's the time we measure for accreditation, from the time we get the call from the 911 center to the time the fire trucks or ambulance wheels are actually turning. Our average turnout time is 53 seconds, so we want to keep that well under a minute. We measure that in a number of different ways for accreditation purposes, but for our purposes here, we wanted to share with you that that time is good. It certainly is below our benchmark of a minute and puts us out of the station on the way to the call in a very timely manner. Want to talk about CIP projects that are coming up, because I know this will be important as part of our budget discussions. As you're aware, cancer risk reduction is very important to us in the fire service because of the things that our men and women are exposed to on a regular basis. And so we want to, we have some new initiatives going on to improve our cancer risk reduction efforts. We also want to divide spaces up within the station. So we have men and women that are sleeping in the same spaces, using the same showers, same restrooms. And so we have been working closely with the public work staff, thanks to the city manager and his team, for developing a plan for how we're going to prioritize these projects over time, so that we can improve our facilities that certainly weren't built for today's fire service. Certainly, at the time they were built, very appropriate, but certainly the fire service has changed, and our department has changed dramatically. So speaking of change, I'm happy to report that because of the investment that we've had in our compensation, salaries, and benefits, that we've had a 33% increase in applications last year. And while I don't know that I would call it a trend, because it only happened one time, I certainly am proud of that fact and wanted to share that with you all, because I do think that matters, and I do think that's important. And not only has our application numbers increased, but the pool that we can pull from in order to hire folks is much deeper. So where before maybe, you know, we would have fewer applications and maybe you could only go 10 deep before you really had to think about, you know, doing something different, that pool has gotten much deeper. So the qualified applicants that are coming to us are much greater in number, and so we're certainly, certainly proud of that fact. We've got three currently in an accelerated academy, so that means that they came from other departments to come here. And I can tell you that those three that came from other departments, like the six before them last year, they came here because they, A, liked what we were doing. They watch us, they see us, and they appreciate the work that we do and the initiatives that we have in our department. And maybe equally as important, some would argue, they came here because of the salary improvements. And so, again, I thank you all for that, the city manager and his staff. We have one vacancy currently. That's a normal process for us. We typically have, we typically carry a couple of vacancies every year, and we have as many as five pending retirements. So with our improved communication within the department, our staff are willing to tell us on a more regular basis about their pending retirement, and they don't mind sharing that with us. And so that helps us plan for the future for staffing, because as you may be aware, all of our training that we do when we hire a non-accelerated provider or a provider with no experience, all of that training that we conduct in that academy, we do internally. So we'll talk for a few minutes about fleet, and this is going to be important sort of as we move forward. You know, we've come to the city manager several times with trying to be forward-thinking about how we're addressing our fleet needs. So if you're not aware, in the past, we could order a fire truck and get it in the same calendar year. We could order an ambulance and get it in about four or five months. We could order a ladder truck and get it in about 18 months. Today, as, and we'll talk about the new fire station in just a few minutes, today, that same ladder truck is going to take us at least four years to get. So there are some significant problems and significant challenges that we will all have to work together on, and so I wanted to certainly bring that to your attention. We're doing our level best to be forward-thinking in how we approach this and be creative, and we'll talk a little bit about, about what that creativity looks like. So we recently, as many of you know, put in service two new fire trucks and two new ambulances. As you know, we need a ladder truck for the new fire station. We have another engine that we're getting ready to start building, and just as an example, that engine has been on paper for more than a year. So it's just been sitting on a shelf somewhere on paper, and we won't start building it until the first of the year, and we won't receive it until this time next year. So about 24 to 32 months longer than it should take. Ambulances continue to be a challenge for us. Again, we could get an ambulance in just a few months, and now, unfortunately, it takes a lot longer. So the challenge for us moving forward will be how to be creative to do that and to meet those needs of our community. We have a great partnership with Fleet Services. I'm certainly proud of the fact that we've combined forces with them, with our mechanics, and certainly proud of the work that we're doing moving forward, with an understanding that we know that we're asking sometimes to spend money that hasn't been appropriated yet, and may not be appropriated for several years to come, unfortunately. So we'll continue to work with you all and work with the city manager and his staff to make sure that we get that done more effectively. So we'll talk for a minute about ISO. ISO is the Insurance Services Office. This is like accreditation, this is a voluntary program that localities enter into, some localities choose not to, to determine insurance premiums. And so in this case, we invite ISO in to sort of grade us as a third party in our response. They only look at fire responses, and there's really a direct connection here with your ISO rating and economic growth. And so one of the things that we talk about is a lower score, sort of like golf, the lower your score, the better you are. And so overall, you want a lower score so that premiums are lower, so that you're paying a lower premium, so that businesses want to reinvest in your community, so that new businesses want to locate in your community. Overall, ISO scores you on your operations in the fire department, fires only, not the EMS side, your 911 center, and your water distribution. This year, we got an ISO score of what's called a 2X, so they've changed a little bit about how the scoring goes. And so there are some opportunities, obviously, for improvement, but I'll share some of the good news first, in that of the 39,000 departments in the United States, we're in the top 5% based on our accreditation and our ISO score. Not a bad place to be. I don't like being in the top 5%, that just tells me there's room for improvement. And so we're going to, we're going to take some strides to get there, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about how we're going to get there. So we were in 85.1, which is a 2, and now we're in 89.6. And unlike my math teacher back in grade school, there's no rounding up, unfortunately. So we're stuck at a 2 and an 89.6. I really tried to get them to round up, but they wouldn't have it. So where are our opportunities for improvement? Obviously, a new ladder truck would help. We've talked about that with you all previously. We know that's coming in the future. The other place that we need some assistance is staffing. So our resource allocation model is correct for what we have, for the staffing we have, but having more staff, which of course would come with the new ladder truck, the new fire station, would certainly position us to be in a better spot. And then finally, we've got some things that we can do at the dispatch center, and we'll talk about that here in a few minutes, and we've certainly been talking with Director Foster about those things. So again, some of the positives, our current resource allocation is great. We've got high marks for the size that we are and for the score that we received. That resource allocation model in the operations sector has been, is great. They complemented us on our incident management and the way that we manage the overall calls. And certainly, we got high marks for having international accreditation. So what are some of the opportunities moving forward to think about? So those are, we need to invest in emergency fire dispatching. So we have emergency medical dispatching, but there's a fire component of that as well. And so we need to invest in that. That gets us in a better position. That also assists the dispatchers, the 911 call takers, the telecommunications that are taking those calls every day. It'll automate some of that. Some of this will come very naturally and organically over time, as we're exploring new CAD opportunities, so new dispatch software, things that'll happen very organically where there's not as many touch points by a human, that'll sort of speed up some of the process. Obviously, we need the new ladder truck, as we've discussed, the new fire station, the staffing improvements, and then, again, training. So it's not about, I want to make sure I cover this pretty well, it's not about the training that we've been provided, been providing is inadequate. It's about we haven't been doing it in the right places, in the right way, and documenting it appropriately. And so we're going to change the way internally that we're conducting training. So just like any, anything you learn from experiences where you didn't get the grade that you wanted, or somebody came in and did a third-party assessment, and you find out that you need to make some improvements. And so we've discovered that we need to certainly make some improvements in how we're conducting our training. We are hopeful that our next site visit would be sometime around our next accreditation process, and so that'll marry up very nicely. It's a lot to chew on at one time, but it'll certainly be something that probably would be fruitful for staff, because if you're into accreditation, about half of what you're doing in accreditation also coincides with what you're doing in ISO, even though they're two, two separate entities. So a little bit about our fire station update and our Safer Grant. So the Safer Grant, there was more than $5 billion, that's billion with a B, worth of requests, for only $360 million worth of funding. And I think what's important to mention here is that we are, we are considered an urban city in the eyes of the federal government, and so we are competing with the likes of Phoenix, Los Angeles, Philadelphia, Richmond, you just, just name it. And so we're in the big leagues. We're where we want to be. We have come, we've come out of the minor league ball club up into the big leagues, if you're a baseball fan, and now we're in the big leagues. And so that does come at a cost. It doesn't mean we're competing against, against some bigger cities. So as an example, Philadelphia received a Safer Grant for $22.4 million, the same grant we were competing for, to open a fire station that had been closed for 15 years. So we're competing against that kind of, that, that kind of city, that kind of thing, and so we'll continue to work on that. Richmond received a Safer Grant last year, and their grant came for staffing. It was their third time that they applied for the Safer Grant. They had a similar situation where they had closed fire stations and were trying to reopen them. So most recently, there are seven localities that received funding, and only two of them were for staffing. And one of them was in Albemarle County, and the other one was in Suffolk. And so the other five organizations in the, in the Commonwealth that received funding were for other things not related to staffing of personnel. So you can tell it's very competitive. We will have a grant writer that will assist us with the next grant process moving forward. We feel like that's a, that's a very good investment, a couple of thousand dollar investment for, for the return rate that might be, you know, might be certainly substantial. And again, we'll be asking for, you know, upwards of 15 to 21 staff, depending on the budget moving forward, to a tune of about $4.2 million. So some of the next steps, as you know, we're working with Liberty University on our agreement with the fire station. That continues to move along as well as can be expected. We will be meeting with staff at FEMA to determine sort of where we, where we need some help on our grant, you know, where some things, some failure points in our grant was, so that we can move forward with a better application for the next time. We intend to apply in early spring of 2024. We already have some information that's come out that that would be in late February or early March, that we'd be able to apply. So we will certainly, we will certainly be doing that. With my goal, again, I got to say this is my goal, just sort of a Cliff's Notes sidebar, my goal of opening the station by late summer of 2025 would be my goal, if we were to be able to get the Safer Grant. So nobody else's goal, just mine. So if we don't make it, blame me. And of course, we're going to continue to invest in staffing and resources for responding to calls. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have. That's a lot I wanted to get through in case it's in the interest of time.
Dr. Wilder?
Thank you for the information. Really appreciate it.
I noticed you mentioned that you've had a 33% increase in applicant pool. Have you seen much diversity in applicant pool?
We have seen some diversity in applicant pool. I think where we struggle, from my vantage point, my lens in working with our partners, is getting applicants that are diverse. So applicants that are diverse that apply generally are fairly successful in the process. Our problem is we don't get enough diversity, and so we're working with some of our community partners to develop strategies so that we can be intentional about how we, you know, get applicants to apply. That's, that's our biggest hurdle when you compare us to other Virginia-first cities and compare us to other partners in our area. It's about, it's about the intentionality of getting somebody to actually apply.
All right, good. Thank you. And also, I noticed when we take a fire truck or item off the market, because we get a new one, do we hold on to that for future use or for backup use? I don't know if we have like backup fire trucks or things that nature says it's so hard to get now.
Yeah, so no, we do have backups, and thankfully, with our partnership with Fleet Services, we've been able to retain an extra backup, both of a fire truck and an ambulance. So we have now four extra backup fire trucks, if you will, and the same complement of ambulances that are available to us. We do that in large part now because we know it's going to take longer to get apparatus in, so we have to keep apparatus longer, unfortunately. And so we have a whole plan, that's a whole, you know, separate conversation that we can have, but we have a whole plan about a replacement schedule, so that we make sure that the apparatus are ready to go. But generally speaking, we buy an apparatus, we sell an apparatus. And so we sell that to some other department or some other locality or some other agency. I've seen fire trucks used as food trucks, as, you know, farm equipment, all sorts of, you know, sign, you know, take a ladder truck and they'll use it for, you know, billboards and whatnot. So all sorts of different things, but yes, we don't keep too much stock, just the right amount, I would say, to move us forward, to be mindful of the money.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilor Missions?
So I got a couple of questions. First, I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Wilder asked. Right now, I know that one of the things that's on the radar is you're going to need a third truck company. So how many physical areas do we own right now? Did we get rid of one when we got Tower Two, or do we have four?
We have four currently.
So, so that's...
Also, to keep pace with equipment that we know is going to take a long time to come in.
Correct, but, but we do have four, so that's, that's a positive thing.
That's correct.
Because it does take a lot of time to get these pieces of equipment. One question I have is, you mentioned the rounding up from what, 89.6, is that what it was?
Yeah.
What would it have taken to get the ISO one?
90. We needed .4 points.
That close, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, with some because of that.
Yeah, that probably, that probably was, felt like a kick in the gut, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, and you mentioned the documentation and the training, like the training records was, was that a big factor in, in ISO?
I wouldn't say it was a big factor. I would say it was certainly one of about four, so it was that. It was the fire dispatching, it was total resource allocation, and it was a lot, I'd say a lot, it was some also about water resources. That's the hardest one, unfortunately, for us to address, because we're the oldest or second-oldest gravity-fed system in the United States. So that one, we can't do much about, but certainly the others, we can, we can improve on.
How did those compare with the previous visit? As far as the, you know, they presented, these are, these are the places where you need to improve in the previous ISO site visit. How did the issues that they brought up compare to what we were presented with this time?
Yeah, so water stayed about the same, which, again, we sort of figured that would be the case. We've got points during the last visit for communications points that we didn't get this time, so we got points for fire dispatching that we didn't have. Not sure how we got those points, but we got them. Okay, we didn't have that, so we got no points this time for that. And then finally, for training, we've got, and I don't remember the exact number, it was somewhere around eight or nine points, it was around eight points, because nine is the maximum for training, and this time we got just under seven points. The interesting part about that is, last time, we didn't document training. We didn't document it in the way we do it now. Electronically, we didn't have a record of it. Certainly, this time, we had records that we could go to. The problem was is they weren't always in the right spot, and so it took us a little bit of time to sort of flesh that out.
So you're saying in the previous visit, we weren't electronically documenting training?
We didn't have it, apparently, in the way that they needed it, no.
The way that they needed it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then, the Safer Grant's kind of a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot of money that it's going to take to employ those additional resources that are desperately needed, staffing. So how do you feel? I know that's kind of a strange question, but, but, I mean, do you, have you learned something from it being denied this time that makes you feel like you're going to be hopefully successful next time?
Well, we've learned, the short answer is no, not yet, because we haven't met with the FEMA staff yet.
Okay.
So when we meet with them, we hope to learn more.
So that's going to be your opportunity for feedback?
Correct.
Fantastic.
Yes, so that we know for the next time.
That's what I was hoping that we'd get that, that opportunity for feedback, because it's so important to, to get that, to try to be successful the next time around, because I think there's a lot that hinges on that, that grant. And then the, the final thought that I just wanted to add to this, and kind of also on one of Councilmember Wilder's comments, shouldn't the focus, when you're hiring firefighters, be to hire the best people to save the lives of our citizens?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, it kind of seemed like diversity was more important than life safety in your response.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that what we're doing, when we're bringing on staff and we're bringing on people to serve our citizens and, you know, potentially have to make tough decisions when lives are on the line, that the focus is life safety and not diversity.
Always. Always my primary focus is what's best for the citizens, our community, and our workforce. Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Frölling?
Keep it up. Seems to be a marketable improvement in the last, at least three and a half years I've been here. And I know we've had a lot of good conversations in my time on this seat.
And this has been a, just a marketable improvement on, on fire safety in our city and medic services, and I know that's in large part a lot of the folks behind you making this happen day in and day out. So truly, I do want to say it's, it does seem to be working, and I commend you and your leadership to that, to that end.
Thank you. They do all the hard work.
Now, I did owe the Vice Mayor, I think, echo his comments. I think that you, the numbers speak for themselves. What a tremendous difference from last year, you know, and really excited to see the improvements, and then thrilled about the new station. Unfortunately, that the backup is so long, unfortunately, it seems like it's a nationwide issue on, you know, that we're dealing with. So... So, the one ladder truck that we're waiting for obviously would be supporting the new station, correct?
Correct.
And that's a 48-month wait for that.
Yes.
So, if we don't order that soon, you would just be using a spare truck to, I mean, that's what we'll have to use, obviously, the spare trucks.
Correct, yeah. So, the sort of the pace of the new station depends on the staffing. Wouldn't want to open a station without having the proper staff complement. We have the resources, albeit meager internally, to get that done when staffing allows. So, we would certainly be able to open it ahead of that 48-month period. That's why I'm sort of, my goal in my own head is that, is the summer of 2025.
Right. And what is the number of additional firefighters or staff you'll need for the new station?
So, we need a total of 21 for the station, that includes a relief factor, something that, as we've talked about before, has not historically been done effectively in the organization, managing that relief factor so that people can go to training, so that people can get the rest that they need, so that people can have the time off that they need and have a proper work-life balance.
Right, good. Well, as you said, yeah, Catherine Taylor, yes?
Are you reaching back into the community to staff your stations?
You mean, are we, oh yeah, absolutely, yes. So we do a number of community events and we certainly, so we do a number of community events, we also do a number of career fairs at the local colleges and universities. We have a very strong partnership with the University of Lynchburg is just one example, where we have a direct line of their students who are interacting with us on a regular basis on a number of fronts. And so we find that our connection with the community has certainly improved. We most recently, last summer, hosted the Beacon of Hope Students for an Internship through Lynchburg City School. So we're doing a number of things to try to ensure that the complement of the workforce that is here stays here, as the city managers pointed out several times, instead of we retain that workforce and they don't go elsewhere. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you so much, we appreciate your...
Thank you all.
No stat.
Okay, moving on to the historic preservation overview. Tom Martin. Soon to be grandpa.
February, yes. Excellent. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. We are going to talk about historic preservation. We'll talk about the purpose of historic preservation, we'll talk about the location of our historic districts, we'll talk a little bit about who the Historic Preservation Commission is, we'll talk about certificates of appropriateness, what's required to get approval, we'll look at our design guidelines, we'll look at some data, and then we'll finish up with why it's important that we preserve. So, if we look back to our historic district ordinance, it was adopted back in 1976, and if we look back at what happened in our city in 1976, it's when we last annexed, we doubled the size of our city. I think it's interesting that at that time, the city made a conscious decision to put an ordinance in place that could preserve our most historic structures. It also established what was called at the time, the Historic and Architectural Review Board, which is now the Historic Preservation Commission. We actually have three members of that commission with us this evening, Mr. Peter Alexander, who is our newest member, we have Mr. Emmett Lifsey, who is an architect with us, and also Dr. Jerry Shereko. And also Ms. Eve Mergenthaller back there is our staff member who serves as the Secretary to the Commission. So there's many purposes for the historic district ordinance, to preserve basically our historic building structures and places, architectural sites, these are our architectural gems, right? This is our character of our city, it's to stabilize and improve property values, but most importantly, when the purpose listed in the ordinance, and when I think about it, it's really to provide an educational resource to foster a sense of pride in our heritage, not just for us, but our succeeding generations, so that they can understand the history and the culture of Lynchburg. So it's important to, it's one thing to read about history, it's entirely another thing to be able to go and visit and see the history of the city. So, how does a historic district become a district? It can be done at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission itself, the Planning Commission, city council can request a designation, or an owner or an owners in the district can request it. And after a public hearing with all of those bodies, city council can by ordinance designate a district for its local significance and contribution to the city's identity and character. If it's adopted, it becomes part of the city's zoning ordinance as a zoning overlay. The underlying zoning does not change, but it puts the requirements for architectural review on top of that. And it does protect the buildings and structures from inappropriate alterations. So, where are our local districts? There are seven main local districts in the city, four of which were the originals, which were designated back in 1978, Garland Hill, Daniels Hill, Federal Hill, and Diamond Hill, and those districts were also expanded. We also have Rivermont that was designated in 2002, and our newest district, the Pierce Street Renaissance District, was designated in 2005. That's a very small percentage of the city's land area, about 357 acres or 1.1% of the city. So a very small portion of the city, but these areas contain, our oldest structure is dating back to 1815, and the parts of the city that were annexed from the time the city was incorporated up until about 1926. The city also contains individually designated properties. These are properties that are not located in a specific district, but it's something about them that makes them historically significant, such as the Miller-Clater House. This structure was actually constructed in 1750, 1791, I'm sorry. It was moved to its current site in 1936, but the interesting thing about this structure, not just its age and that, but this is allegedly where Thomas Jefferson ate the first tomato and proved that it was not poisonous. So there's 22 of these individually designated properties, 62 acres or about .2% of the city's land area. So we're looking at about 1.3% of the city's land area. So there's also state and national districts. These are areas that are not designated by council, yet they are designated by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources or the National Park Service. And once they are designated, they become part of the Virginia's Landmarks Register or the National Register of Historic Places. Once they're designated, these properties become eligible for state and federal tax credits, depending on the amount of investment that they make in the property and rehabilitating it. If you look at downtown Lynchburg, which is in a state and national district, a lot of the renovations that have occurred over the years have been done with assistance of state and federal tax credits. Makes it very beneficial for people to renovate and rehabilitate these older buildings. Moving on, who is the Historic Preservation Commission? They're a commission of seven members that is appointed by you, council for three-year terms. At least one member by ordinance has to be an architect, one has to be an owner or resident in the district, and two other members have to have some type of professional standards or qualifications, such as a historian, architecture, planner. And having those educational requirements and standards makes the city to be eligible as a certified local government, which we are through the state of Virginia, which allows us to apply for grants for education and preservation work. The HPC, they administer our historic district ordinance, they provide guidance and assistance to our citizens and owners in the districts. Each district has an advocate. So if you're in the Garland Hill Historic District, you have a specific advocate on the HPC that will come out and meet with you, give you input and suggestions on how to complete your project. So, our commission spends a lot of time working with people in the historic districts. They meet on the third Monday of every month, and again, Ms. Eve Mergenthaller serves as the staff representative to that commission. So, certificates of appropriateness. Any exterior modification to a property in a historic district has to receive what's called a COA, Certificate of Appropriateness. That's regardless of whether or not the work requires a building permit. Some of that work is classified as minor work and other is classified as major. If it's minor work, such as painting the structure, replacing elements, siding with the same materials, in-kind materials, that can be approved administratively by staff, usually within, I'd say, a couple hours to a day. So we try and turn these things around very quickly. Major work, which would include additions, the demolition, things that really change the exterior features, are required to go through the Historic Preservation Commission for approval. And then, interior work, anything on the inside of the building does not require any approval from the HPC or staff. And landscaping, as long as it does not change significantly the grade of the property, requires no approvals from the HPC. So, the HPC design guidelines are the basis for what the COA approvals are based upon. And these guidelines were updated and revised in 2013 to incorporate new materials that are out there, such as PVC that looks like wood but it won't rot, other types of materials. And it also, they also talk about the architecture that's in the historic districts. So there's, the city has just an impressive amount of different architectural styles, everything from federal to Queen Anne to American Four Square. Laymen, like myself, sometimes have to go and look in the guidelines to see what type of structure it is. And knowing that and being able to look in these guidelines helps staff, the HPC, and also the owners, to determine what type of changes are or are not appropriate. So these guidelines are really a resource for everyone. The primary approach of the guidelines is really threefold. Repair would exist, it's always better to try and repair the original materials. If you cannot do that, replace it in kind with the same type of materials, and if that's not an option, replace with substitute materials. And we'll see later on where windows were replaced with composite PVC.
There's a little reverb.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She shut the sound, that probably...
I know I don't sound like that this week. Okay. Our guidelines do follow the National Park Service guidelines, also known as the Secretary of Interior's Standards for Rehabilitation. And these are widely accepted across the United States for guidelines for historic preservation. So our guidelines, they really cover a wide amount of information for doing preservation work on a structure. Everything from the chimneys to decks to doors to windows, skylights, down to foundations, what is appropriate. Also lists specific types of paint colors that are appropriate for different types of architectural styles. The guidelines use words in them such as appropriate, meaning that the actions are suitable to be made, acceptable actions will be approved under most circumstances. And then it uses words like recommended, these are actions which are suggested but aren't mandatory. So moving on, window replacement is obviously something that has a major part of the appearance and the function of a residence, right? So again, the approach is repair, replace in kind, or replace with substitute materials. The two that have been before council on appeal this year have been vinyl windows. Vinyl is generally not acceptable in a historic district, although it has been approved in the past, depending on the circumstances and the location of those windows and whether or not they existed prior to historic district designation. The guidelines do allow cellular PVC, they also allow things as aluminum clad, and not just windows, but other materials that have been approved are things like fiberglass porch columns can be approved, faux slate shingles can be approved. So it's really not a matter of getting hung up on the material, because there are just a wide variety of different types of materials that are more suitable, rot resistance, long lasting now. It's the appearance, making sure that the windows are the same shape, the same size, the same number of lights, has the same appearance. And the next slide shows an example of that. This is a window replacement out on, I believe, Cabell Street that used the cellular PVC. And this cellular PVC can be painted, and you look at the before and after photo and you can tell that the windows look exactly the same, but it's different types of material. So, how do people know that they're in a historic district? Well, first, the majority of these districts have existed since 1978. There's these little brown signs in all of our districts that show that you're in a historic district. And each month, we send a letter to every new owner of a historic property, and we send them a letter welcoming them to the historic district. We send them a list of the HPC members with their names and contacts so they know who their advocate is. We send them a list of the HPC meeting dates, we send them a Certificate of Appropriateness application, and we also send them a pamphlet describing the historic district process and frequently asked questions. So, we are letting people know early on that they are located in a historic district. So, here's some data that's important to look at, and we looked back at the past five years, and you can see the administratively approved COAs versus HPC approved, and we do a little bit more administrative than HPC. But if you look at the amount of COAs that have been denied by the HPC, in 2022 was the highest year with 5%, and it really averages somewhere around 2% to 3% per year. That's denials. But then, if you look at the number of denials resolved, so after it was denied, the HPC goes back and works with the owner, that percentage is really right around 1% to 2%, okay? And another important thing to look at is after-the-fact COAs. These are people that know they're in a district, they've probably had stop work orders put on them, and they continue to do the work anyway. And typically, what that results in is it gets them in a pickle because they've done something that they shouldn't have, just like any other zoning issue that we deal with, and it ends up coming to council on an appeal. And if you look at the two that were done this year, that was, they were both after-the-fact COAs, and council upheld the HPC's decision on those. The one back in 2020, that was not an after-the-fact, but that property owner didn't end up building the fence anyway. So, very small percentage. So out of the past five years, you're only looking at about a half percent of appeals to council. So it's very low appeals to council. And I think that's very attributable to the work that the Historic Preservation Commission and staff does in working with property owners. And it's also attributable to the fact that the majority of the owners in the districts realize the importance of their investment and they're following the guidelines. Historic district property values, just very briefly, if we look at, this is just an example, but if you look at Federal Hill and Diamond Hill, you can see that the property values in the historic... values in the historic districts are significantly higher than the adjacent, anywhere from a half million up to upwards over a million dollars. And what we've seen, looking back at the districts like Rivermont, after the district is designated, the property values tend to stabilize and increase over time. So why do we preserve? It improves the quality of life. It obviously creates jobs for artisans, contractors, carpenters, people that really know how to do this historic work. It promotes tourism. One of the things that we hear time and time again during planning processes, importance of the history of Lynchburg and the architecture. That's what brings a lot of people to the city. Historic structures last longer. We're talking about structures that have been here since 1815 or before. And there's also programs to help promote preservation and tax credits. So just briefly in closing, the city's historic districts are a very small part of our city, 1.3%, yet they are extremely important to our identity and for our future generations' understanding of the history of Lynchburg. Our guidelines are a useful tool for property owners and city staff and the Historic Preservation Commission. And the HPC will, they can, and they do approve alternative materials where appropriate. So they do that. The amount of HPC denials are very low, at 1% to 2% per year. And I believe that the HPC and Ms. Mergenthaller work extremely hard at administering these guidelines in a fair manner while protecting our historic districts and the historic district owners' investments. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Foral?
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I have a couple of questions and takeaways on my own. You had mentioned it a little bit, I don't remember which slide it was, it was a few back. If you don't mind, sifting backwards, I'll tell you which one it was. No, yep, sorry. One more. Two more forward, sorry.
Two more forward.
And one more. There you go. So this spoke to a little bit of the question, this is how I typed it up. What has been the largest impediment for developers in these areas? In other words, both from a fiscal and illogical place, as well as denial from the commission? And what the heart of the question is, you can't get, I've watched little bits of meetings on social media when Rachel was in the ER working, and I have an obsession with local government, so. In other words, I'm trying to understand, what's the biggest impediment? Because obviously, things aren't made like they were 200 years ago or what have you. So what's the largest impediment from a fiscal, illogical sense? That's the logical part. And then, when the commission wants to stick to their guns for reasons that are assigned, can we parse that out a little bit?
Well, again, the amount of outright HPC denials are extremely low, at least in my opinion. I think what you see, honestly, I mentioned it earlier. You have people that come in, they flip the house, that's what they're doing. It's really not about the investment that they're making there. You know, and another entire point of the historic district ordinance is you're protecting your investment, right? And that's why people, you know, the last meeting, you had a lot of angry people here because they didn't follow the guidelines, and it affects their investment. So really, I think it's a matter of talking to staff, consulting the guidelines, and talking to your advocate, and there's always a way to work through it. You know, the city has rehabilitative tax credits in place. Yes, some of the materials are a little bit more expensive, I probably can't talk to that as much as Councilman Taylor could. But typically, the long-term investment is better.
I guess what I'm striving for in the question is, even in the guidelines, it has language related to the foundation of the home or the structure, I'd say. Well, if there are techniques that are just not practiced anymore, related to the structure of that home, what are we going to do? Just let the building fall over? And that's kind of, as an example, and I'm very much an apprentice on, you know, home construction, I'm sure Councilman Taylor could speak more to it, but you understand the logic. Are there some parts of these structures that are just not able to be addressed in a modern technique, or the materials, skills, labors that are available?
I think that some of the work, the restoration work, is highly specialized, right? I will say that it is no one's intent to let a building fall over. That's why it's so important that the HPC has architects on staff. You know, they can figure out a way to save those buildings.
Yeah. Is the, if appearance is the main priority and not so much the material, is that clearly established at the foundation of these guidelines?
Well, again, it's a stepped approach. The first thing is to repair what's existing, right? Then it's to replace in kind, so if you're wood with wood. But then, if that's not feasible, then you can go to alternative materials. Like, let's take a slate.
And that's clearly articulated.
Yeah. So let's, and that's in the design guideline. So like the example of a slate roof, obviously slate's very expensive, right? So the, if you were to repair the roof, the preference would be, if you didn't have enough slate, say, take the slate off of the back of the structure and move it to the front, and then put the faux slate on the back. You're replacing in kind, right? It's not to take the slate off and replace it with asphalt shingles. So it's a stepped approach. And the HPC, I believe, does a very good job in working within those guidelines.
So I, I'm a bit of a history nut myself, and I want to make sure we are protecting these homes and the culture that they offer, the insights that they can provide. And yet, in observing this year in particular, I do feel like there is opportunity for us to revisit the guidelines, and I personally am not a fan of the term guidelines, because that means they're, well, if they're called guidelines off the top, and then within those guidelines, there are some things that are mandated, you must do these things, and some things are on a case-by-case basis. You can see why, even if someone was outright wrong in their approach, could misinterpret and say, well, they're just guidelines, they're across the board, they're just guidelines. One of my favorite movies articulates that, it's just guidelines, they're really not rules. So that's just maybe me just being a word hawk.
Maybe, maybe the guidelines.
The heart behind it is, I do think if these have been adopted since 1976, having a rework, not necessarily rework, maybe nothing changes at all, but council should reaffirm the policies, work with the commission to say, you know what, they're still, they still check off, they're still up to par. I mean, at this point, we're going almost 50 years ago. So that, just, I think that's healthy to do. I think the state does it on many levels of sunset clauses and reaffirming policies and cleaning them up. I think that's worthwhile.
Yeah, sure. So again, the last time they were revised was 2013.
2013, okay.
Just as we do our comp plan every 10 years, I don't see any reason that we couldn't look at revisiting some of these.
Do we have a schedule then? So I missed that in your presentation, so forgive me. Do we have a schedule?
We don't have a set schedule for reviewing them, but that is something else, why it's important to be a CLG, there's potentially a grant that we could apply for. We can definitely look into that if council desires for us to do it.
I think if we had an anticipation of every 10 or so years that we're going to revisit them, and logically, if you serve three terms, nine years, is there a nine-year term out? For this? So then theoretically, you're revisiting these policies every 10 years when you have turnover? I mean, it just seems to make sense to me. Then the only other comment I made in my notes is that if there needs to be clarity on, like, these are the things that we are going to mandate, like, make sure that we're clear on that. And I'm not saying we're not already, but just in light of this year, I think it's worth revisiting and making sure we're hunky-dory.
I would agree. I think one of the things I've heard from people that I know that live over in the historic area, that, and some of the concerns that I think fellow council members have made this past year, is, you know, the desire to not turn off maybe younger investors that want to come over and buy in the area, that want to make improvements, but obviously, we want to abide by the HPC policies or guidelines. So how do we work between the two? I know, you know, you look at these beautiful homes that have these slate roofs, well, some of them are from, let's say, for example, Italy, from, you know, 100 years ago, and if the requirement is even on the front of the house, you still have to replace it with that, it can be extremely expensive. I know I have a friend that her neighbor, it was going to be $200,000 to reslate the roof. I mean, there's a lot of people that can't afford that, a lot of people. And if you have a younger family that wants to come in and really appreciates the history of the home, but they're on a budget, you don't want these to be reasons why they can't invest in our historic area. Or if you have, you know, Turkish curved glass in our front window, you know, also hard to replace. So it's, to the vice mayor's point, you know, 2013 and now and the cost of things, and of course, supply chain issues and so forth, are there some modifications that can be made to the guidelines where we're still, the look is still there, we understand the need for that preservation of the look, but because of expenses and so forth, can adjustments be made so we can still not be turning off people that might want to come and invest in historic areas, but still preserve the appearance of the homes? I think that's something that I think would be where we could maybe balance some of it out a little bit, that I would be interested in maybe having further discussions about. Anyone else? Oh, Councilman Missions?
I got a couple of things. One is, I think, when we had that last COA with Mr. Malacy, I believe it was, I think I asked to have these guidelines revisited. So I'm in support of what both the mayor and vice mayor said on that, so let's see if we can get that on a future agenda. If you can go forward one slide, because I'm trying to take a look at this from a little bit more of a macro perspective. You know, we really need to take a look at our return on investment when it comes to the decisions we're making here. So you mentioned earlier that having a historic district has us qualify for certain federal funding, right?
If you're in a state and national district, it does qualify the owners for historic tax credits. Being a certified local government qualifies us to apply for certain grants.
And do we have any, like, ballpark, shot-in-the-dark, you know, kind of idea of what the return is on that? And I'm not saying abolish the historic district, I'm just asking these questions, you know, that says, this is what we get. Is it 500,000 a year, is it 50,000 a year, is it 5 million a year? Like, what is the revenue that we get from having this district?
I mean, we could obviously look at the assessed values and compare them. As we can see, they're much higher than the adjacent neighborhoods. And that could be for a number of factors, that the houses are bigger, but typically, it's the same size lot. And a lot of it has to do with the maintenance and the attention to detail that makes these houses more valuable.
So, but the interesting thing that you just mentioned, that these houses are more valuable, but when I look at this, this picture, there's a lot of red on there. Yellow starts at value, valuation of 309,000, and the next letter, orange underneath that, is 232 to 3092. And I just looked it up real quick, and the median value of a home in Lynchburg is 242,000. So that's one of the things that, when I look at this, I see the vast majority of the homes on that picture, and I know that doesn't show all the historic districts, are way under the median home value in Lynchburg. So the question that I'm having with this, is there a possibility that these restrictions are actually suppressing the ability for people to invest in these homes and increase the value? That's what I'm wondering about. Because when I look at this, you know, one of the things you got to think about with homeownership is generational wealth, right? So that's a great way for people to build generational wealth. People invest in their home, they pay off their home, home values tend to rise over a lifetime. But what I'm wondering, when I look at this picture, when I see all that red, is there a possibility that the restrictions in historic districts actually suppress the ability for values of homes to increase over time? And how does that compare with the nonhistoric districts? Because I think that's really what we should be looking at. Because if we are doing something that suppresses the ability for these values to rise for the property owners, because it's so difficult to rehab and renovate and do these things, then we're also suppressing their wealth, right? And we're also suppressing the revenue for the city. And that's just, it's just a big hypothetical, kind of throw-it-out-there question, that I'd really be curious to see what that analysis looks like, and how the values rise in historic districts over time versus how the values rise in nonhistoric districts over time.
Yeah, and that is, that would be an interesting thing to look at, and we try to do that a little bit in.
I know that's a big, like, it's a big thing, but it, you know, that's, we don't want to get in the way of citizens and property owners.
Sure, and I really don't think we're doing that. If, the important thing to note about this slide, if you look at the areas of red, they are not in the historic district.
Okay.
So that very light shaded gray underneath, which is where all the lighter values are, the yellows and the greens, that, those pockets, I don't know if I can do it here, but those pockets of higher values, that's a historic.
That's the historic district.
Yes.
Okay. All right. But that would be something interesting to look at. I'm just curious, what's the return on investment for us, you know, being tight on these restrictions? I think that we should maintain the historic districts, keep them, for sure. But is there something that we need to do with revisiting these guidelines to make it more accessible for people to invest in these properties and rehab them?
Sure.
It's interesting to note that only a few of them have been denied, so I appreciate you providing that information. I'm a resident in the historic district, and I go to my monthly meetings, and most of the time, less conflict with city council. They're pretty passionate about the guidelines. They move to those, that area because of the guidelines. So the neighbors that move into the area are familiar with it and are moving there because of the guidelines. So if you talk to a resident, now renters are different, are investors, but if you talk to most of the persons who are buying those houses, to live in those houses, they are buying and living those houses because of the standards, because of the procedures that they know they have to, say they have to set forth in order to live in that district. So they, how passionate they were here at the last meeting, that's how passionate they are in our monthly meetings about their neighborhood. So again, they appreciate those standards and move there because of those particular districts. And when you're moving in that area, you know what you're getting into. You know how certain guidelines, when I moved into my house, I got the guidelines in the mail, I got what the standards were, my realtor informed me about it, and my contractor told me what I had to do, my color of the house I was selecting, any renovations, they told me what I needed to do. So it wasn't like I was going in blind. So when they do purchase a house in the area, you're given the information ahead of time. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Councilman Huggins?
When I look at the slide that you had, if you can back up a slide or so, back to the numbers, yeah, right there, the numbers. So when I look at that, now, I kind of, as I see this, there's about 120 approved each year. One or two or a couple denied each year. And so now, I think about, most of these things are all aesthetic. I think you had even a major, what was it titled? Major work was something that didn't even require a building permit. And so with that being the case, you're now wondering, I guess, following up with, continuing on with Councilman Missions, about what has it done to repress? So now we look at these, and there's been 120 a year that have been just approved. That means people had to now take off work, go to the commission, go to staff. We had to have staff that are approving it, and if most of them are being approved anyway, you know, 600 approved in the last five years, only five of them, or, you know, 20 of them denied, the cumulative, tiny percentage. Is that now inhibiting? Because when we look at these things, when people appeal them, I relook at the words, that there's lots of words that say it's, you know, they're basically subjective. And people that are wanting to invest, as stated about the other material, that cost can be very prohibitive. And then you're looking at, most of these are approved anyway, is this an impediment? You know, anytime I've ever painted my house, you know, I'm worried about getting a painter. I've ever painted my house, you know, I'm worried about getting a painter, figuring out how much I'm going to pay him, or if I'm going to paint it, or I'm going to do all that. But now on the, also, I have to now go down to City Hall and go to a meeting the first Monday of whatever month that you talked about, because I want a different color white. Is that an impediment? That people would say, I don't know about that. You know, and so with that being the case, lots of people I know recognize these rules, recognize that they're there. Some of them are passionate about it, as Councilman Wilder said, and love them. Others just say, eh, that's one area I'm not going to buy. You know, that little map that you put out, 1.2% to the population of the acreage of whatever the city, that's an area that people aren't going to buy. And I drive up to some of these when I'm listening to the appeal and looking at, did these windows look pretty good? Did it look better? And then I drive by, I see boarded up, derelict houses in that same neighborhood. And I'm thinking, is this helpful? And I think with that, you know, what happens is when you have people that come with the, I think the last one, the gentleman that came and had a, you know, pretty logical explanation, was trying to be kind, and was attacked. People are eventually going, I ain't doing that. Why should I buy in that place? When I'm having people that are calling me names just because I wanted to fix up this house. That isn't the purpose. The purpose is for people to say, you know, you're spending a lot of money. Fix it up. Great. Fantastic. Going through lots of these items, I don't know if it's been helpful. I mean, I love the historic houses that are fixed up. But I love the fact that it's somebody else doing it. I know we had a lady that just, you know, she ran for the House of Delegates recently. And she came before us on several fronts. Columns, 24-inch columns versus 26-inch columns, thousands of dollars of extra expense. But it was, for some reason, no. It just, there are things that need to be fixed on this. Again, most of the people that are doing it, most of these are approved. If most of them are approved, and they're not structural problems that even would require some type of building permit, I'm wondering if we can make this a lot easier and make it a lot more efficient, for people don't have to take off that Monday to show up and, you know, hopefully, they've had enough tea and crumpets on those monthly meetings with the people that they'll be their friends as opposed to attacking them. So I just, I think we need to do something a little better. I know that there's not many that are denied. Most of them are approved overwhelmingly. 97% of them are approved. Great. That's, so if most things are approved, why do you still have to go? Yeah, I'm sure it may change somewhat if they're not, but maybe you can address some of those. Throw out a lot of things. And oh, by the way, I learned something new today. I've known you for, I guess, probably the 30 years, still on the Planning Commission back when you were here. And I got to learn something brand new today. I have never, when I saw the name William, I thought, who the devil is that? Your brother's here. So, welcome, William.
Thank you very much.
So if he can answer a few of those, he was about ready.
Well, I understand why you, why you say people might, or look at it as an impediment. I think I would not really look at it the same way, because if you look at it, the majority of them are admin approval, where they can email it in or submit it electronically online.
They don't have to show up.
They don't, for the admin approvals, no. The ones that actually do go through an HPC approval, yeah, that might be an impediment. But let's think about if we didn't have the process and what would happen to our historic districts in 10 years. They'd be unrecognizable. Because you've got certain people that want to follow the appropriate historic preservation methods. And you're going to have some that do not. And once you start doing that, you lose that equal protection of, you know, I know that my investment over here is going to be protected because the person over here is required to do the same thing. That's a simple premise of zoning, right? So again, I don't think it's as much of an impediment, but I understand your opinion and respect it.
And I don't think it is necessarily just carte blanche, equal application of justice. Because some of the items that are, because the guidelines themselves are, you know, subjective. They're guidelines. They're not rules. And so with that, when somebody has a legitimate complaint and legitimate desire, you know, I think, anyway, I think we need to do some things. We don't probably need to do a lot, but I think we can make it a lot more efficient, easy, easier. It won't be as taxing on staff with administrative approvals. It'll allow people to feel a little bit better in their homes that they purchased. So, you know.
I think there's always room for improvement. And I think, at least I've heard loud and clear from council that you want us to try and revisit the guidelines. And I think that'd be a great exercise to start with the HPC. And we will certainly do that and bring it back to council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. No, we need to really move on, because it's, we're pressed on time. Thank you very much. Okay. No, not silencing, just moving on. Thank you. Okay, so we are moving on to the citywide curfew. Yes?
Just go ahead and keep the original business item on the list. Our counsel attorney, she was able to speak and spoke to Ryan. And so when he does his presentation, he'll be able to convey.
Oh, so just leave it at the end?
Just, yeah, just leave it at the end.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to our business item briefings, rezoning B4 Urban Commercial to B5, General Business District, 602 Taylor Street and 1212 Park Avenue. This item will appear before council for action on December 12th. Ms. Rachel Freshisen, hello.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this petition is to rezone the properties from B4 Urban Commercial District to B5 General Business District to allow the use of the properties for used automobile sales. The subject properties consist of approximately 495 thousandths of an acre located at 602 Taylor Street and 1212 Park Avenue. These properties are included in the area covered by our Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan, which was adopted by City Council on May 23, 2006. The Future Land Use Map recommends neighborhood commercial uses for these properties fronting Fifth Street and Park Avenue. These areas are intended to consist primarily of office, retail, personal service, restaurant uses that are scaled and designed to be compatible with and serve their immediate surrounding neighborhoods. These properties are also located in close proximity to the State National Historic District along Fifth Street, which Tom just mentioned, means that properties in this district may be eligible for tax credits. That district was pursued by the city as a recommendation of the Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan to allow property owners in that area to take advantage of those tax credits to help with revitalization. Planning Commission recommended denial, getting ahead, Planning Commission recommended denial of this petition at their meeting on October 25, recognizing that the petition does not align with their recommendations of our future land use map, our comprehensive plan, and the Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan. The commission also expressed concern for setting precedents for opening the door for more auto-oriented uses in this area, which negatively impacted Fifth Street and the adjoining neighborhoods in the past. The petition is scheduled for a December 12 public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from anyone in council? Councilman Huggins?
You know, when I look at this, the Fifth Street, so it's off Fifth Street, you know, it's 600, so it's a block off of Fifth Street. But yet you keep citing the Fifth Street Master Plan. You know, this is a property that's been, a long time ago, was cars. They sold cars there. And there's still things up in the window that shows car sales. That area, I don't think car sales has been an impediment to Fifth Street. I mean, car sales was Fifth Street. Car sales was Adams Motor Company until they sold. I mean, that was one of the oldest and busiest Chrysler Jeep dealers in the country, for crying out loud, led by our former mayor, Julian Adams. I mean, that was a very successful car dealership. And I don't think that car dealerships are, you know, it's not like, it's almost being phrased as some sleaze here. I think we all drive cars. And people need places to buy them. What I've seen over with this piece of property, it's been kind of decaying in that area for a while. And having somebody that would actually invest some money and put a shot in the arm to improve that area, I don't see how that is going to be negative. Investing in money, investing money in an area that has been fairly, you know, underutilized for quite some time, the assessments are probably fairly low, somebody that can improve it, improve the quality, sell a product that people would want to buy, I think that makes sense. Right up the street, there is another B5. I think it used to be a B5, or at least the ability for selling cars used to be allowed, until we actually changed the zoning ordinance, right? Mr. Martin? Mr. William?
So.
Or unless you either, sorry.
I'm trying to remember all your points.
I know Tom was here before. When we changed the zoning ordinance, it used to, when the zoning ordinance changed, there used to be the same numbers allowed.
Yes. So if I could address what you were saying about this being on Fifth Street. The Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan does cover the two blocks on either side of the Fifth Street Road itself. It also recognizes kind of the importance of the adjoining neighborhoods, Garland Hill, Tenbridge Hill, branching off from Fifth Street itself as a corridor into downtown. As far as the investment, the petitioner, their representative has indicated that they would be willing to clean up this site, but has not indicated to staff that they would be doing any exterior improvements to these properties themselves. And as well, the property was Zoned B5, I believe in 1978. The Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan recognized that that was not good for the area. I've got a couple quotes here. I don't want to read them all to you. But essentially, it made sense in 78, when the plan was to expand Fifth Street out to four lanes, make this more of a thoroughfare. At that time, you know, the thought was probably that this whole area would be redeveloped into a B5, kind of larger scale retail area. However, since that, you know, that plan was not followed, fortunately, we did not blow Fifth Street out and kind of wipe away that history. The B5 was no longer appropriate when the 2006 plan came around. And recognizing that, the plan recommended zoning to, it was called B6 at the time, Riverfront Business District, which became B4 in 2015, when, 2016, when we rewrote the zoning ordinance.
I'll just say, she is exactly.
So but it took out, it took out some of the things that used to be allowed that are not because of that 2016?
It did, because there were some uses in B5 that would not be appropriate on a scale in a neighborhood like the Fifth Street area, Garland Hill, College Hill, those places. B5 allows things like commercial, heavy equipment rental, lumber yards, self-storage units, and recognizing that some of these sites are directly adjacent to what looks like single-family residential on the same block. That's, it makes for a really difficult transition and could impact those residents.
So I guess the precedent that just happened probably two, three weeks ago was an R1.
The precedent?
Yeah, the precedent that was set where an R1 was recommended to be changed to a B5 on Leedsville Road.
Referring to the, the central region?
Yes. And so that went from an R1, the least intensive use, to a B5, the most intensive use. But here, you can't go from a B4 to a B5, because it would devastate the neighborhood. I don't know if that, I think that precedent changed two weeks ago, when it went from an R1 to a B5. I think this one, we should give it its due hearing. I would hope to see that the developer would actually, I know you mentioned that they weren't planning on, or didn't put anything in there as far as improvements. But I think the intention is to actually improve it to where they could actually have an attractive area that will be able to sell some cars. So I guess we'll hear that in a few weeks. When does this come before us?
December 12.
December 12. I hope council will give it a fair shake and think about it. Because when you can see somebody that's taking vacant property and turn it into a business, and hopefully, a thriving business, I think that's good for the area. That helps tax revenue. It helps improve the area. How they do it specifically, I think we can undertake that with the site plan review and what happens when we hear this in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're staying up for the next one. Yes. Okay. So move on to the conditional use permit. Hope Diamond Childcare Center, 805 15th Street, 805 15th Street. Yes.
Thank you again, members of council. The purpose of this petition is to allow the use of an existing structure, 805 15th Street, as a childcare center. The property is Zoned R2 Low Medium Density Residential. Childcare facilities are permitted in this district upon approval of a CUP by City Council. The subject property is located at 805 15th Street and contains approximately 43 hundredths of an acre. The entire Diamond Hill Baptist Church campus, including nine adjoining properties, is approximately 2 and 25 hundredths acres. Because the subject property lies within our Diamond Hill Local Historic District, the petitioner submitted an application to the city's HPC for the exterior changes to the property. And the HPC approved a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed fencing and play area on October 16. The petition is supported by our comprehensive plan and the Diamond Hill Neighborhood Plan Draft. During the neighborhood planning processes, stakeholders and residents have expressed strong support for increasing and expanding early childhood care and education opportunities within this neighborhood. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on October 25. And this petition will be back for a city council public hearing on December 12.
Any questions from council? Okay.
Fence approved. Where, is that in the front or the back?
The fence is shown as the blue line across the front of the property there, you see, on 15th Street. And that connects to existing fences that are already along the side. So it will create an enclosed play area for the children.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the Riverfront Amphitheater update. This item will appear before council for action on December 12. Mr. Greg Patrick.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Excited to be here today to talk about where we are with the Riverfront Amphitheater project. Before we get started, wanted to recognize a few of our stakeholders that are in the room. We have Skylar Clark from Predator Hotel, and Dennis Marsnick from the Virginian. We have Dave Henderson from Hen and Hound Management Companies, and Ann Dickerson from the Perry Restaurant Group, who together represent nine restaurants. John Senar from Bikes Unlimited and from DLA, Chris Boswell, our board chair, and Ashley Kirchner, our executive director. Also from McQuanus, we have Ed McCann, who is a tremendous partner for us, with us in the downtown Riverfront project. Bottom line, what we're here to discuss today is, this is a project that was approved for funding a couple of years ago. But like all projects, especially construction projects, we don't have enough money. So ultimately, we'll be coming back on the 12th to ask council for an additional $3 million to make sure this really important project gets started underway and in place. So current status of the project, $4 million in ARPA funds were appropriated by council for the project in the fiscal year 2023 CIP. There were some additional funds at that time from existing public works and parks and recreation projects. The project is 100% designed currently, and we'll show you some of those design specifications in this presentation. We put the project out to bid for construction in May of 2023. The last cost estimate we got from some of our construction partners about a year earlier was that this project would come in, based on the design, the specifications we had at that point in time, at about $4.6 million. Low bid from Jamerson Lewis was actually closer to $8 million. Would love to tell you that there is a very specific reason for this cost increase. But what it really comes down to is construction inflation. Things just cost a lot more now to build than they did when we began this, this process. If we were to get started soon on the project, we would expect completion around July of 2025. So a little project history here. This, the River Park, Riverfront Park project has been a key component of the downtown and Riverfront Master Plan and the downtown 2040 plans. Really, this has been in the works for 25 or 30 years. This is not a fly-by-night project. This has been, this has been in the works for a long time. Those improvements in the plan include building a destination amphitheater capable of hosting national touring acts, installing a fence and gate system so that we can control access for ticketed events, but also. for ticketed events, but also allow for the passive use of the park in between events, build permanent public restrooms. Right now, we have to truck in porta potties, porta johns anytime we have an event downtown or in the, in the park. Build a new playground in conjunction with our partners at the Quanis, and then add shade canopy landscaping, and then of course, upgrade all of the infrastructure, stormwater and sewer infrastructure. So, based on the design that we have, this is an overall site plan. And if we work from left to right on this site plan, you'll see the playground that we would build in conjunction with the Quanis. The Quanis has raised more than $150,000 for this project, and it is just to the north on this slide of the, of the existing spray grounds. Then you have the shade area, which connects to the, the, the spray grounds there, and then the restroom facility. You see the new landscaping along the railroad tracks and the permanent fencing on the southern end of this picture. And then of course, the stage, the amphitheater, as we move to the right, and then the lay-down area behind the, behind the amphitheater there to the far right in this drawing. This is a perspective view of the amphitheater itself. It is really going to be a beautiful structure. It was designed in conjunction with some, some high-level professional operators to make sure that what the items and the facets that made an amphitheater a venue successful and easy to use, we were able to incorporate into the design, and that's what we've done. This is a view of the rear of the amphitheater, and this is, you know, not the sexy part of the amphitheater at all, but it's, but it's important to show you this as it's reflective of the efficient way in which this was designed. It allows easy access in and out for the acts. It allows easy access to load and unload all of the equipment, and it's, it was designed, again, in conjunction with a professional operator. These are the restroom facilities, also, again, a very nice, very nice facility here. And then of course, the playground that we would build in conjunction with, with the Quanis, that would be attached to the existing spray ground. Just a great facility to use either during events or, or outside of events on the Riverfront Park. Here's an overall perspective view. Again, as you can see, it, it's designed to be a beautiful venue and one that is, is easy to use, and that will be a great amenity for folks in the community and in the surrounding areas. Here's the main point. There's rarely opportunities for cities to invest in true revenue generating projects, and that's what this is. This, this would very much be an economic engine for us. I don't know how many of you guys had an opportunity to go to the Bright Nights event a couple of weeks ago, but the crowds that were there, I think surprised everyone, right? And it really just spoke to the community's desire to have these types of festival events. And it was, it was a great event, extremely well-attended. And that's what you would get with a performing venue like this. Right now, if we look back in time, we've averaged 15, 16 events per year. We've garnered about 17,000 visitors on average. With the completion of this amphitheater, we would expect an additional 10 to 20 nights of programming, 75,000 visits to the city. One of the most important things to understand about a venue like this is it helps the city generate tax revenue in the most efficient way, right? Selling experiences. First, first off, a lot of the folks that come to these events are coming from areas within 100 to 150 miles of the city. They're not necessarily Lynchburg residents. So you've got people coming in from the surrounding area, from the region, and they're spending money in our city. They're spending money on, on hotels, on meals, on tickets, and what's, what's really interesting, I did a calculation of, of someone who would come into Lynchburg and spend $500 at a big box store on a piece of equipment or a patio set, something like that. That $500 would generate $5 in local revenue, local tax revenue to the city. That's the 1% local option sales tax. If that same person or couple came into the city, spent $150 on tickets to an event, $150 on meals at restaurants, and $200 for a night or two nights in a Lynchburg hotel, that spending would generate $39 in local tax revenue. And it's that efficient generation of local tax revenue that helps us grow our tax base and also mitigate some of the burden that's placed on our homeowners, our business owners, residents, and stakeholders in, in the city. So it is a, it's a great opportunity to efficiently generate tax revenue. So, keys to, keys to success, build the full project. What we would recommend is, we either build this full project the right way, or we don't do it, right? Avoiding the slippery slope of value engineering. I, I had a colleague that once described value engineering as removing all the cool stuff, right? And the minute you start removing all the cool stuff, the attractiveness of the venue, it, it loses a lot, and it's not going to perform in the way that we need it to perform. Attracting a first-rate operator, that goes back to, to the first part, right? Build the full project. If we want a first-rate operator, someone who's going to be able to help us attract the best acts, really put on shows that generate high-ticket sales, high-ticket values, then, then we need them to be able to operate in a facility, in a venue, that works for them. And then of course, identifying a naming rights sponsorship, again, that venue's got to be top-notch. We've got to build the full project to really generate a good written naming rights sponsorship deal. So, next steps, December 12th, we'll bring a budget amendment to council to amend the fiscal year 2024 CIP to add $3 million in project funding from the general fund balance. For those of you on the finance committee and Mayor Reed, who sat into the meeting, our CFO, Donna Witt, walked through where we ended fiscal year 2023, and there is a, about $15 million in fund balance above what's required by city council's financial policies. So we would recommend using some of those funds, and then of course, sign the construction contract and begin work.
Thank you very much. Councilman Helgason?
Thank you. You know, I appreciate this. It's basically, the project has doubled. A year or two ago, it was, you know, 4 million as you have in here, four and a half, now it's eight. I read your economic engine report, which it's theory, there's no numbers. So once I saw this, I thought, well, where is somebody that we know who does quantitative analysis, not just theory and words, but actually quantitative with numbers? So we, if you all remember that we had the Chimera Economic Consultants that came, I think last year for us for our council retreat or something, and what they did is they gave a pretty exhaustive report. With that, I pulled up the work that they did with regarding the pavilion in Charlottesville. And so they had just done that, showing actually the quantitative numbers of what they estimate the local revenue would be, or has been, for their pavilion, which their pavilion, I think, is bigger. It's grandiose, it's at the end of, you know, one side's the Omni, the other side, I mean, it's right in the, the park downtown, or, excuse me, the mall. I looked at those numbers. $372,420 a year in revenue. I teach finance. Revenue is important, expenses are as well. So I said, okay, what would we do? What would the budget, what would be the debt service on this $8 million project? $770 million. So we would generate revenue of three, and I can appreciate that, how nice, and people would love it, and it'd be neat, and, you know, but I look at the numbers that, that they've generated. $372,000 a year in revenue. I did some numbers as far as just the debt service. Eight, you know, $770,000 just in debt service on that $8 million. Also, you got to think about the expenses. New bathroom, right? We got to pay for the water and the sewer. There's maintenance. You know, a lot of these buildings that we have in Lynchburg that we haven't kept up with, that need to be fixed. At finance committee today, we talked about our declining revenues, or our revenues are not growing as much as they could. We had our senator and last week that came, Senator Newman, that talked about concern about road projects and smart-scale funding. We heard about the possibility of the recession that's coming, and meaning belts have to be tightened. I think this is a wonderful idea. It's a fantastic possibility. The numbers don't, don't, don't match up. With that being the case, I think it would be very prudent for us to be able to use that money, like I think I suggested we should have when it first came out with that ARPA money came out. We all agreed, even, I think, the former council was unanimous, was one of the few unanimous votes that we had, and that was building the police headquarters. Started out kind of tenuous, but ended up being unanimous. That is something that this ARPA money, we could have used all of it for. And this extra $4 million that's sitting there, we could go to pay down the debt service. I think some of those costs have gone up slightly with furniture and fixtures and whatnot. Right now, the prices went from $4 million to $8 million in a matter of a year or two. It's in a floodplain. It's a fantastic look, but I don't think any of the businesses that are here that run hotels or restaurants would say, hey, here's our revenue, but here are our expenses, and that's a good thing to do. So I can appreciate people have a desire for it, but when you look at those numbers, it just doesn't make sense. We haven't, we've done this economic engine sheet that says, hey, there will be lots of people. Chimera did the actual numbers, and what theirs, that has been in existence for quite some time. I don't think it justifies us spending $8 million for this project. Lot of neat things, lot of possibilities, but it's just, it's, it's not now. I think when we look at how things can change, we've had tremendous increases in inflation because of lots of federal spending. I think as that federal spending subsides and we get into a recession, I think lots of things will be, will be, will be glad we didn't spend this money, that we'll have it for the new fire truck. I think Tex came forward today, talked about the, the cost of the new fire trucks that we're going to need in the new station. We're having declines in revenue, or those increases aren't going to be there. I mean, we saw the finance reports, those of you that are on finance committee. You saw those revenues that used to be increasing and increasing, they're not happening. So I just think it's not prudent at this time, especially when we can look at some of those other numbers that are there from our neighbor Charlottesville. So I hope that we can utilize these funds, like I probably think that we could take the $4 million that was the ARPA money and apply it easily to paying down some of the debt on our police headquarters, and we would then utilize, instead of spending more of that extra $4 million, in our shrinking budget, that we'll be able to very prudently think about how we can keep those for a rainy day, or spend them more appropriately for our taxpayers. I think Winter had laid out some things with regarding, you know, trash rebates. I've, I've hear also the things that are coming down the pike with regarding schools. I mean, schools have said, hey, we're going to need some funds. And I hear about what Senator Newman and Senator Peak said last week, when they said if, if the General Assembly change, changes those calculations for the formula, we're going to be getting a whole lot less revenue to the city, but yet the school system is still going to have those same expenses. That means it's going to come out of our operating budget. When we have the ability to stop and pause because we see 100% increase in the cost, I think that tells us something. Alarm bells are going off, says pause, put it on hold. So I hope we do that when it comes before us in two weeks.
Councilmember?
So I agree with, with what Councilmember Helgason had to say. You know, I was just looking at some, some interesting data in the, the long-term bond market. Isn't a bear market worse than a dot-com bust and almost as bad as the 2008 recession? There's a handful of people in this, in this room, I think I can recognize each and every one of them, that were here, either, well, there's one person that's on this dais right now, and that's Councilmember Helgason, that was here in 2008. There's a handful of people over here in staff that worked for the city in 2008, as did I, when we had to furlough every employee. And what led to that furlough? Well, I think it was that Fifth Street Roundabout, if I remember correctly. And there was a warning not to spend that money on that Fifth Street Roundabout at that time, not to saying, not saying not to do it, but just to put a pause in it. We heard our fire chief mention earlier how important it is to invest in our people and our staff, the people that actually go out and do the work for our city. And I just can't be comfortable making a decision to, to spend those one-time funds in case we were in a position with a recession in the next fiscal year, where we did fall short. And great, we're going to have a new amphitheater, but you know what? Then we got to furlough all our city employees. And if I got to make a decision between the two of those, I'm going to choose the people that serve our citizens every time. And I just really think that we should put a pause on this project and reevaluate. This is not the time to be spending additional funds that we weren't planning on spending on things that may be very nice, and, you know, there could be a positive revenue impact down the road with it, but we're also going to have to offset that with the operating costs to maintain it. So we don't know. We don't really know what that's going to be. But I will not vote in a manner that will ever put us in a position to have to furlough our city employees. They're too important. Their costs are rising, just like our citizens. I saw a statistic about Thanksgiving, that the Thanksgiving meal was, I think, 60% more this year than it was last year. Right? So I don't think that this is wise. I think it has the potential to be a great project. I think it's something that we should definitely hold on to for the, for the future, but with the economic uncertainty we have, and let's face it, the economic reality today, from when this project was approved by council, is completely different. We're in two different places. I just don't think it's a wise way to spend our taxpayers' dollars, and I think that we need to make sure we're in a position where we do not have to furlough any of our employees, and we've also got other things to consider, additional expenses, like the fire chief mentioned. You know, we didn't get that safer grade. There's no guarantee that we're going to get that next year. Right? But we do need a new fire station. We do need more firefighters and paramedics. We do need those people to serve our citizens and protect them. So when it comes down to what's nice and what's necessary, I'm going to go with what's necessary every time.
Dr. Wyler?
Thank you for the information. I greatly appreciate it. You know, when I look at the 2020 plan, now the 2040 plan, you know, this is that plan some 20-plus years ago. So they've been working on this project for over 20 years. Now, if you're from Lynchburg, I've been here all my life. I know how Lynchburg used to be downtown. Lynchburg downtown is not, was not a pleasant place. It was, you know, kind of dead, there wasn't a lot of things going. If you look at Lynchburg now, 20 years later, you can see all the investment that private businesses have made, from the restaurants, to the attractions, to the academy, to the great movie theaters, the great theaters that we have, all the theaters we have, all the great hotels we have, so many amenities we have in our community now. the great hotels we have, so many amenities we have in our community now that we didn't have some twenty-plus years ago. It's because of the investments that have been made. This again is, to me, is another investment in our community that will bring in revenue, that will bring in tax dollars, that will bring in more seats in the hotels, that will bring more persons into our restaurants. So it's an investment. And also, when you go to a city now, you want to see what amenities do they have? With businesses that are looking to relocate, what is there going to be for my employees in that city? What kind of attraction are going to be from walking trails to amusement, to entertainment, to amphitheaters? What kind of entertainment is going to be there for my employee to say, yes, I want to move to this city because they have this for my employees? So this is an investment all the way around. I look at the quality of life for residents that are currently here. You know, you know, we, I think the age of population was like, I have like thirty-five or something like that, whatever that age is. Twenty-eight, which is a young population. We have a great population of Liberty University and University of Lynchburg and Random College, all the great schools we have here in our community. Again, when they come into our community, they want to say, what is there going to be for me than just a college town? But also after I do my work, can I go to a movie? Can I go to a theater? Can I go to a show? So all those things to me add in revenue, add in seats, add in dollars that's going to be spitting to our city, that's going to increase the revenue, that increases tax revenue, the attractions. Those things are going to make our city continue to thrive. You know, we can be a dead city and say, oh, my God, it's dead and gloom. We're about to furlough employees. We're about to close our doors. We can have that vision of doom. But I like to have a vision of prosperity, that we can continue to grow, we could continue to thrive because we are a strong city, real resilient city, and businesses continue to make investments. We have a great development center downtown that continues to have some great things. But they had, the governor just sent like three hundred-some thousand dollars for the investments for those, for the startup businesses, to get rid of certain, certain businesses that were closed or infrastructure that weren't open, but make more investments downtown. So I'm so excited about what they're doing in our community and how hard they're working to make sure our community is a better place. So I'm excited about it. I'm all in favor for it. I'm looking forward to, we can vote on this, so we can continue to keep our city moving and keep our city thriving. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
My meeting with Mr. City Manager, he assured me that if we spent some of this money, that it will not bankrupt the city, that we have, we have a leg to stand on, right?
We do. And just to, we have a retreat this, this Friday, so excited for that. And, and the conversations that we're having, and I'm not going to do this great, but I'm going to try. We're using one-time money to help bolster a project. Councilmember Missions brings up 2006, '07, '08 recession, right? The tension that we have, and this is kind of a policy-like conversation, is how do we, how do I, as your city manager, how do I move things forward to increase the tax base? Right? To have the revenue necessary, as I agree with you wholeheartedly, what was your quote about employees and?
If I've got to choose between employees and projects, I'm going to choose employees.
And I think I've shown that that's my philosophy as city manager. 2006, '07 it was, fax, reduced the tax rate to, from a dollar eleven to a dollar three. You spent the better part of, I forget how many years, before you put real, put those pennies back on the real estate. So the tension that we have here, in my opinion, from a philosophical standpoint, economic standpoint, is how do we continue to generate resources necessary to meet the expenses with running a city? And so I just wanted to point that out as a, as a context, historical context. Now, the difference being then, one-time money, Mr. Taylor, three million dollars is not going to bankrupt the city. No, it's not. But there is absolutely prudence in thinking about whether or not about the timing. The takeaway that I think I want you to have is what Greg started with, is either you do it or you don't. Because I think if you do, if we have to value engineer some things out of it, Greg's point about taking the cool stuff, I won't get the operator necessary. I won't get the sponsorship rights that are necessary. I'd like to see those numbers. I know that Chimera, she's, Chris is fantastic. And I think you're talking about Ting, right? The Ting Pavilion, yeah. And, and let me say this upfront, is it going to be the golden goose? Most entertainment venues are not that. If what we're, if what you believe that we're promoting is that somehow it's going to generate resources far and away that, you know, are, we will be Midas in our accounting houses with the resources that are there, it's not necessarily going to be that. But will it be another thing, another air in our quiver that helps ensure that people access our cities, put their heads in our beds, buy, you know, food, stay, what have you? It's another resource for that. So just a little bit of feedback, we do have this, a retreat this Friday, we can take some, take some more time to kind of give you a little bit more feedback ahead of that. And it's positioned, again, the good news is there's no vote necessary this evening, and we'll get you more data in advance of the 12th.
I've just got a quick question about something you just said, just to contact and clarity. You mentioned prior to the 2008 recession that the tax rate was, was decreased?
I think so.
Right. And I know Councilmember Helgason was here, was that an equalization or was that an actual reduction?
It wasn't even an equalization. I think it was actually an increase.
So, so, so just for, just, just for perspective and for facts, there was no revenue reduction for the city?
And again, I get, this is where I get in trouble as far as reduction and equalization. The numbers were, it was a dollar eleven and it would, it would change to a dollar three. However you define that, however you term it, it's a different number that the city was working with as it related to real estate.
But the net revenue for the city?
Not that, I, I don't know. I just know that you got hit in eight and then we didn't recover until 12 or 15. And at that point, to your point about the importance of employees, you did one-time bonuses and we saw quite a bit of compression that we've taken the last two years to kind of really unpack and, and change, so.
But there was, there was a 1.8 million dollar capital project, the Fifth Street Roundabout, I think it was 1.8.
I, I don't know that project.
That, the Fifth Street Roundabout. And that was equivalent to the one-time.
Furlough.
Contingency funding that, that could have been used to prevent the furlough.
I got you.
So, so, so the, the picture is?
For the one year, right?
Because the furlough was one time. The furlough was one time.
Yep. And, and so it was a one-time reduction in funding to employees at the same time there was a one-time.
Now, now I understand.
Expense on, on a capital project.
Got you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Patrick. We will look forward to talking about this on for this Friday and then again on the 12th.
Yep.
Thanks so much. Okay. Now, Chief Zudma, you are going to come and talk to us about the citywide curfew. Hello.
Members of council, appreciate the opportunity. I'm here to talk to you about curfew. As you recall, this was enacted back May 26th of this year for a six-month window. It is set to sunset on December 1st, which is why we're before you here tonight to give you kind of an update and a recommendation. I'll tell you upfront, the recommendation is to extend the curfew for an additional six months for the goal of trying to gather really a full year worth of data. We know that crime trends tend to fluctuate with seasons and we'd love to have a full year's worth of data to compare to. As the time that this slide presentation was put together, we had forty-two juveniles that had been charged. That was as of the 19th. I can tell you that four additional juveniles were charged. I'll give you a little bit more information on that on the last slide. So it's a total of forty-six over the last six months. Want to give you some context, sorry, went too far, with data as it looks, and what we're doing here on the top chart, you're comparing May 26th, which is the enacted, sorry, the enactment of the curfew through November 19th, when the data was gathered, comparing 22 to 23 years. And you can see when comparing that same timeframe from 2022 to 2023, you're looking at double-digit decreases across the board for property crime data. What we also like to do is look at it historically as well, not just on a year-to-year basis. So that bottom chart does that, and your first column there is a five-year average for property crime offenses, again, during that same window of May 26th to November 19th. And again, when you look across the board there, with one exception of auto theft, you can see all of the crimes are down significantly. Anytime you see even into double-digit crime reduction, that is significant. Usually when you look at crime reduction, you're looking at single-digit numbers as being decent. So these are pretty good numbers. Auto theft, I will tell you, is, you can see, last year to this year is actually down about twelve and a half percent compared to the five-year average, we're still up. That is predominantly related to, unfortunately, people leaving cars unlocked with their keys in them. And we have done a social media campaign to try and address that, but that, that is challenging for us. When we look at violent crime data, again, same charts comparing the top one, 22 to 23 for the same timeframe we're talking about, you'll see again reductions across the board there in all those categories. And then the bottom chart, again, a five-year average, when we look at that five-year average, we're seeing the same decline, most of them, with the exception of one category being in double-digit reductions. So as we talk through that, I will tell you that, I'm not going to tell you the curfew has caused all of these reductions in crime. There's a lot of things that we've been doing in the community, I think, that lead to this. Do I think it is correlated to that? Absolutely. When we look at that, you know, this, the curfew is really, it allows another tool for our officers to address delinquent behavior in youth. There's a lot of times, I think, when I presented this to you several, you know, six months ago or so, when we were looking at enacting this, I told you that, you know, a scenario of, you know, officers right now see juveniles out after hours, right, late at night, they're probably not up to any good at two o'clock in the morning, walking around in the street. But prior to the curfew, short of them committing some other type of criminal act, they didn't have a tool to get out with them and try and address that. This curfew allows just that. And the story I'll share with you directly related to that, just Friday night, the additional four arrests that I talked to you that are curfew-related, our officers were working, it was during the curfew hours, they saw four young individuals who were out, they had masks on, they had surgical gloves with them, and they were carrying empty backpacks. So they stopped them, they identified all of them, all four of them were underage, all four of them were charged with curfew violations. And in discussing that with one of the four involved, when they asked, what are you up to? Are you out here looking to break into cars? Because that would be indicative of all those things I just mentioned. And the one juvenile acknowledged that, yep, they were actually on the way to go break into cars that night. So the curfew is working, there's no question about that. When you look at the overall averages, property crime is down almost thirty-three percent compared to the same timeframe last year. And one of the key indicators, if you recall, when I was in front of you six months ago, I said, these larcenies from vehicles are oftentimes juveniles that are going around, just like this scenario I just gave you. That is down almost fifty-four percent from the same time last year. So that would tell me that, again, I'm not going to say the curfew is causing all of that, but I will tell you, it's definitely correlated with that. We've instituted stratified policing, as I've talked to you before, that's certainly helped that as well. And when you look at violent crime, we're down about twenty-five percent compared, overall, compared to the same time in 2022. So the, the last thing I'll mention to you, and I can't get into a lot of detail with this because it is an open investigation, but the curfew, I know factually from talking to my detectives who are working a case, prevented a juvenile from coming into possession of a firearm based on solely the curfew being in place. And if we kept one firearm out of the hands of one juvenile, I would say that's a success as well. So that's kind of the, the quicken information on curfew update, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
One last thing. Our Commonwealth Attorney Bethany Harrison was here. We'd originally tried to move it, she had to leave at five o'clock for another obligation she had. But just in speaking to her, she is fine with me sharing the following with you, that she certainly supports the curfew. They are actually prosecuting these cases in juvenile court. And the last piece of information she sent to me before she had to leave was that judges have actually been repeatedly suspending fines for first offense, juvenile youth curfew violations, and allowing them to complete community service as a part of that. So she just wanted to pass that along, but she is in support of extending this for four months as another opportunity for us to have a tool to address some of the delinquent behavior. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council? Councilman Helgason?
Just to, you know, I'm glad we did this six months ago. I think that was a good thing and we got to test it. And as you mentioned, there's lots of numbers. And when I look at statistics, I realize too that correlation is not causation. And so pretty hard to say that all of these are there, but hopefully there was some benefit. I'm also very delighted that we put in, you know, in the ordinance, it automatically sunsets. So it's, it's done as of November 1st or December 1st unless we decide to keep it. You know, and we can add it back at any time. You know, just recently, we finally repealed the 50- or 70-year-old ordinance on taxi cabs, which probably should have been repealed a long time ago. But the way government lots of times are, we put an ordinance in and it stays there forever. I'm glad we're able to at least test this. I don't know if I'd be inclined to renew it for another six months just right off the gate, but we do know how well it can work. And if next year, next summer before schools happen again, we can reinstitute it back then, you know, for those summer months, as opposed to just kind of, you know, once we implemented this curfew, you know, you start hearing the news reports and they start talking about, well, Danville's had one for 22 years. And you think, maybe it was the, the magnitude of just coming in, you know, that it had it extra benefit. And so rather than just having something that lasts for decades, you know, you put something in, you know, you put the community policing, you put in your stratified policing, you put in where you're really active in those neighborhoods, you know, knocking and, you know, and really finding criminals, that I like to see. And I can appreciate these numbers, I just, I'm not sure, I wouldn't, I don't know if all of it would be targeted to just kids that are eight, under eighteen. But, you know, I, I'm glad again that we did it. I'm glad that it sunsets. I don't know if I'd be, I wouldn't probably at this time be inclined to vote to keep it going for another six months, but I would be inclined next summer before school starts to start to, to look at it again to see if it, it can be utilized.
Dr. Wilder?
Thank you for the information. I haven't heard anything negative about it, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that no parents complained or I didn't get any phone calls to say it was a negative thing. So I, I support whatever our Commonwealth Attorney suggests, as well as our police chief suggests. I believe in supporting them as far as other tools in our toolkit that we can use to help fight crime. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll be inclined to support it for the next 24 years. All the, all the citizens I talked to, they're in agreement. It was needful, we did it, and we're going to stand on it.
Yes, I, I know, I know we've talked and I know I've talked to the Commonwealth Attorney about, you know, how well it's worked so far. And, you know, I know we've spoken about your interest in extending it to see continued data, having a little bit longer to see the trend on it. So, you know, you're the expert and I respect your opinion on, on the issue and obviously Commonwealth Attorney Harrison's as well. Also, I'm thrilled to see it working. You know, we weren't really sure, but a lot of the work that I'm doing with the coalition that I'm involved in, and they are all super happy to see what we're seeing, especially with the juvenile crime. So I'm a hundred percent supportive of extending it. I, I don't know, do you, is your opinion six months to get the data, you think that would be sufficient?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Again, we see seasonal changes in criminal activity, so I think to have another six months and then we'd be happy to come back in front of council at that time and present additional data or answer any other questions you may have about it.
Okay. So like on May 1st, that'd be six months, right? So, because we're, we're sunsetting it December 1st. So. Councilmember Missions?
I was just curious about a couple of things. One, did you see any between, you know, kind of two seasons, summer and part fall? Was there any difference in the enforcement between those, those times of the year from what we've seen?
Yeah, so these are total numbers charged and I'll try and calculate November on the fly as we go. May 4, June 6, July 15, August 12, September 3, October 1, and then if my math is right, and I didn't go to school for math, but I think five in November, bringing it to 46. So definitely two highest months were the July and August months.
So definitely, summer, summer is definitely a big, yep, yep. And that from, anecdotally from my experience in public safety, that's when we were always having the most action at night, so to speak.
Yeah, obviously, less things for kids to be directly involved in because school's out, so they're.
Yeah, yeah. They're not tired because they're not stuck in school all day, so. But it's good to know. And I had a neighborhood watch coordinator reach out to me, I feel like it was several months ago, and, and she had concerns about the data. The, the data that was being provided to the neighborhood watch coordinators was apparently very different than the data that was being presented on the, on the website. Have we got that resolved?
Yeah, so I think I'm familiar with the incident you're speaking about. And what was provided at the time to neighborhood watch coordinators was offense data, and what was being posted on the website is arrest data, I believe. So there was, and don't quote me on the exacts, but there were two different sets of data for the same incident, offense data versus arrest. So we've clarified that so that the neighborhood watch coordinator should now be getting the So we've clarified that, so that the neighborhood watch coordinator should now be getting the same data that's being posted to our website.
And that's what, what you've used here in this presentation?
Yeah, so the stuff here is just offenses charged is what we're providing today.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Dolan, sorry.
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in supporting this for at least another six months till you get a longer history on it. And I, I really don't see how it can be harmful at all. And again, the reason I supported it going the first time around is because it gave you all another tool in your toolbox, so that you could, you know, help some of these areas that we have the high crime rates. Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm sorry, Mr. Benda.
Yeah, Mayor, so considering, Councilman Henderson brought up the point that it sunsets as of December 1st, this is a business item briefing, considering that we could have a resolution prepared and ready for general business this evening, if that so chooses, so that we don't have a lapse in time, or we can bring it back on the 12th, whatever the consensus or the guidance from counsel.
I also want to do a vote of consensus to add it to the end of general business tonight to vote. Is that okay with you? Yeah? Okay? Just add it and discuss the things?
You see it lapse.
Right.
For a period of time, and then you're just started up again, you've got 12 days.
So six months would be a June 1st.
So if you, January, February, March.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay, if we just add it to the end of general business? Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, roll call, Dr. Wilder.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, we did lose a, an amazing coach, Coach Mike Bennett from Heritage High School. His funeral was on last Saturday. He coached, I think, track at Heritage High School, also a special ed teacher, a wonderful gentleman, so we continue to pray for his family. Also, we are thankful that today was Giving Tuesday, had a lot of great events in our community, Give Good, and Shad Lynchburg had an awesome event this morning, and the rest of things, and we're glad to see Chris Boswell in the audience today. He's one of the chairs for the Mustache for Kids. That's an amazing project in our community. I think last year they raised about $600,000 or so, just the same total for this year, and it ends on Friday. Several men in our community are, well, hopefully it's men, are in our community are growing mustaches, so we appreciate all the hard work the men are doing. I'm not sure how many men, about 200 or so, are volunteering their services where they grow a mustache and raise funds. Our police chief and fire chief, they're looking dapper in their mustaches, and several, all the city staff members are doing an awesome, awesome job. But again, we just, it just, it sort of lights my heart to see our community come together. It's always, sometimes, I think, I love my nonprofit world, I can see the good side of Lynchburg, sometimes you don't see that nice community working together, but when I look at my nonprofit side, I see such great compassion, and see so many men coming together for camaraderie, and working together, and just really bonding together for our community. It shows what a great community we have here in Lynchburg. So I'm so thankful to Chris and all the great men that are raising funds for this great project, that's all for children's charities, that all supports children in our community, things that you might not have the funds for, but thanks to support so many great projects. So I'm so thankful to him and all the men in our city that have taken the lead in doing so, and raising funds, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dolan?
I have nothing to say.
Come on.
I have to try and grow a lot of that.
This, this Friday, Liberty University, for the first time that they're in a major conference, Conference USA, they're playing in the championship, and they're hosting it. And so I do hope that everybody, even folks who don't care much about Liberty, you recognize that economic impact. You talked about those economic engines. Look at all the people that are coming, that filling up the hotels and spending money in restaurants. I hope everybody in the city will come out and support, because this is right in Lynchburg. Get a ticket and go there, and see the difference, and see, and you can appreciate our sports team, Liberty's football team, that is unprecedented, 12-0, never happened at any Virginia school, at least FBS. I don't know if William &amp; Mary did it, or JMU did it a long time ago, but I don't know of any 12-0 school. There's never been in the Division 1, the FBS, that has been actually undefeated. And so, fantastic, let's go support them. I think the city has been helping coordinate too, some of the things with tourism, helping people come and get in hotels, and, you know, the hoteliers especially, all those that are, the majority of them that are out, Ward's Road, really appreciate this, and because it's, they're really coming out there. I know a lot of other events, you know, the city kind of pushes them for the downtown ones, but close by there is a great thing, all the hotels, all the restaurants, hopefully they'll be full, and hopefully everybody up here will be going. I got my four tickets and ready to go.
And your mittens and stockknaps.
And my mittens and stockknaps. So that's, that's an event, which we talked about, the pavilion earlier today. We talked, we both, we grew up in Minnesota, and the Minnesota Vikings, where the stadium was outside, it snowed, you were cold, you're expecting to be cold when you're out in a football game, but now you think about the pavilion, you're not going to go see some jazz musician playing his electric, or steel guitar in January in the snowfall in 35 degrees. So you're now taking a pavilion that could have been 12 months, and you're now shrinking it to five months. So hopefully we'll throw those kind of in the mix as well, but this will be a great one this Friday, I hope you all can be there.
Counsel's missions?
Just a few things. One, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the Peacemakers' new crisis intervention facility that they opened up on 12th Street, it was a great event. I see Mr. Peter Alexander in the back of the room on our historic preservation commission, he was also there, as well as the Mayor of Roanoke, and some other folks, so it was great to see what they're doing there. Next, you know, I really want to touch on something that I think is very important. So two weeks ago, the Lynchburg City School Board entertained a grant from an organization that promotes porn literacy and group masturbation in their sex ed video series targeted for school-aged children. Fortunately for our city's children, the school board rejected the grant funding with a 7-2 vote. School building is not the place to promote a brand, that children should research to find recommendations on sexual perversion. I want to thank the following school board members for their courage to deny this predatory organization access to our innocent schoolchildren. Dr. Gupta, Dr. Day, Mr. DePaul, Mr. Jalil, Mrs. Lowry, Mr. Trost, and Mrs. Preston. This was a win for our city, and it was a win for our children. It's also now clear that Lynchburg has become a battlefield in the war to protect children from predators and those that seek to confuse, groom, and pervert them. The school board's principal decision was also met by anti-Judeo-Christian hate speech from an organization that appears innocent on the surface, but has a political motive behind its existence when you examine their various positions. Save Our Schools LCS immediately fired back at the school board stating, "Members' religious values do not have a place on the school board." That was their official statement. This is a fringe belief and hateful position that has been adopted by the Democrat Party and their far-left allies that want to remove God from the public square. In our nation today and across the globe, we have seen a rise of antisemitism and violence perpetrated against the Jewish people unlike any time since the Jewish genocide during the Holocaust. Any intimidating statement to prohibit the free exercise of religion of another must be seen for exactly what it is, hate speech. Article 1, Section 16 of the Constitution of Virginia states, "All men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and the same shall in no wise diminish, enlarge, or affect their civil capacities." And going back even further, Bill Number 82, which was introduced by Thomas Jefferson, carried by James Madison through the General Assembly of Virginia in 1786 until it passed, and now commonly referred to as the Virginia Statute for Religious Freedom states, "Therefore, though prescribing, any citizen is unworthy of the public confidence by laying upon him an incapacity of being called to offices of trust and emolument. Unless he professes or renounces this or that religious opinion, is depriving him injuriously of those privileges and advantages to which in common with his fellow citizens he has a natural right." And going on, it also says that "The opinions of men are not the object of civil government, nor under its jurisdiction." And even further, the General Assembly of Virginia enacted this, "That no men shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship place or ministry whatsoever, nor shall be enforced, restrained, molested, or burdened in his body or goods, nor shall otherwise suffer on account of his religious opinions or belief, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no wise diminish, enlarge, or affect their civil capacities." The passage of Bill Number 82 is observed annually on January 16th as National Religious Freedom Day, and has been commemorated every year since 1993 via presidential proclamation, and it's also been recognized by the governor of Virginia. Because this is the basis, this led to the freedom of religion for all Americans in the United States, and it's the basis for the right enshrined in both our federal and Virginia constitutions. So you're probably asking, "Why am I giving a history lesson?" It's simple. Each and every one of us behind this dais took an oath to uphold both of these documents that define and guarantee the rights of the people in our city. I also took an oath to defend these rights, even if it cost me my life. I cannot remain silent when an organization in our city disguises advocates for our public schools, seeks to deprive our school board members injuriously of the privileges and rights in common with our fellow citizens to which they have a natural right, through the intimidating tactic of hate speech. It's unconstitutional, it's anti-American, and it's contrary to the values of our city. In addition to their obvious anti-religious liberty approach to our school division, they're also advocating for an approach to education through the lens of a leading feminist and critical race theorist who coined the term intersectionality, a concept which was proposed to advance identity politics. It's also not appropriate for our schools. So what can city council do? We can do a variety of things. First and foremost, we must make a clear stance that religious liberty is alive and well in Lynchburg, Virginia, and we will stand in opposition to all forms of religious bigotry, which is why I'm formally requesting, if you can pass that to the mayor, which is why I'm formally requesting that the mayor proclaim January as Religious Liberty Month in Lynchburg, Virginia. Our city has a long tradition of being home to churches, synagogues, and other sanctuaries for worship, and we need to make it clear that this city council respects the natural right endowed by our Creator for religious liberty for our citizens, our staff, our board and commission appointees, and our peers behind the dais. Our oath to the Constitution matters, and the rights of free people must be upheld and protected by government, not trampled upon. This proclamation should also not be watered down as a simple statement. It should be a bold and inclusive proclamation that makes it clear our city will not cower in the face of relentless attacks against religious freedom by the hardcore progressive left wing of the Democrat Party. These operatives want to erase our Constitution and establish their state religion of secular humanism, a worldview to eliminate the moral values that made America the greatest nation in world history. Second, we must continue engage the war to protect our children from these harmful ideologies. We may have won the first battle in the school board 7-2 vote, however, we are still at risk of losing the war if we do not earnestly, with proactive and not just reactive actions, try to protect them. Chapter 6, Section 38 of the Lynchburg City Charter gives the city council authority to prevent vice and immorality in the city limits. So I'm formally introducing an ordinance related to limitations on sexually charged performances, to prohibit these porn performances when minors are present. I'm requesting a one-on-one with the city attorney, there you go, sir, in the coming weeks, to work out the language and details of this draft ordinance, so it may be introduced on the agenda in our first work session in January for discussion, prior to consideration for adoption in the following business meeting. Finally, I again express how urgent it is that someone from the prevailing side of the motion that failed on the discussion regarding the Merit Excellence and Opportunity Resolution bring that in back to the table in a future work session for consideration. We must prevent our city tax dollars from funding an organization that promotes harmful ideology in our public schools by recommending curriculum and articles for educators that includes a K-2, K-2 kindergarten to second grade lesson plan, that encourages elementary educators to have a, to read a book to their students titled, "Who Are You: The Kid's Guide to Gender Identity," and suggests that teachers introduce children to an app that has them try out new pronouns. These are only two small examples of a much larger and devious agenda to indoctrinate government employees, educators, and schoolchildren with politically motivated far-left ideology to promote identity politics, destabilize the nuclear family, and deny religious liberty. The time to lead in Lynchburg is right now, before it's too late. Inaction on these serious matters demonstrates complicity in the effort to undermine religious liberty by ushering in an establishment state religion of secular humanism and endorsing the sacrifice of our city's children to predators that seek to groom them into perverse and immoral lifestyles before they're even of age to understand themselves. Little boys should not be led to castration, and young women should be protected in school bathrooms, locker rooms, and on their athletic teams for men. Thank you.
Counselman Taylor?
I'm good.
No? Okay, I'm watching for all these here. Okay, I just wanted to say that I loved the Rite Nights event that the DLA put on. It was amazing, could not believe the number of people that showed up, and everybody was so excited, you could really just feel the spirit of the, of the season. I ran into former Mayor Whitaker, he was with his whole family, he was almost skipping, it was so, it was hilarious, he was so excited. You know, since we didn't have, get downtown this year, I think everybody was just ready for a big downtown event, and you could just really feel it. There were just kids everywhere, and I was just really proud of how that event went, went down, and it just was really cool to see. What, it was between 4,000 and 5,000 people, I believe, was the total number, so that was wonderful, and it was really well done. So I know that everybody that I talked to was really excited to see it come back next year, and I think we've, we've hit the jackpot on something that people will come back to the city to see us do, and really was well done, so, thank you for that. And tonight, I will be talking about, or acknowledging, the IT department, woo-woo! You know, the IT department doesn't think that they're, that they're, you know, probably recognized, but they're, they're important to me, because I'm not, I'm not savvy when it comes, ask my husband, I'm not savvy when it comes to anything, or my children, because they think I don't know how to use my phone. So, here's to you, IT department. The Information Technology Department is responsible for providing enterprise technology services and support to all city departments, as well as some state and constitutional agencies. IT operates in a consultative, consultative, sorry, and collaborative manner, partnering with its customers to understand their business needs and aid in aligning technology solutions to meet defined business needs and goals. Their mission is to partner in our customers' success through the provision of high-quality information technology solutions and services. The IT department consists of five divisions, which are geographic information systems, and the network services, application services, information security, and the management and administrative teams. Did you know the city of Lynchburg has been in the Center for Digital Government's top 10 digital cities for cities our size since 2004? This survey commends cities utilizing innovative technology for better government. The IT department's key performance indicators are to provide a 99.95% uptime for critical business systems and services during normal business hours, maintain a 90% on-time completion of all reported incidents and service requests, and sustain an average customer satisfaction ratio of 3.5 out of 4 for all surveys returned for work completed. So thank you, IT department. All right, we will now consider, go, consideration of closed...
Since it's, we're a half hour past our time, can we move that to tonight's closed session, since we already have, it's scheduled on closed session, but we don't have it, move it tonight by consensus?
Madam Mayor, I would say I could probably get done what I need to in 10 minutes, if y'all give me the time to do it. If there's a majority, I'd like to do that.
Okay, well, if you want to do it in for 10 minutes, let's go ahead and get that done.
Okay.
Consideration of closed meeting to discuss the city's participation in an opioids class action settlement concerning McKinsey &amp; Company, Inc., and related entities, and to discuss the city's participation in the acquiesce film forming foams product liability litigation with EI, DuPont, Dina Moores &amp; Company pursuant to sections 2.23711A7 and 2.23711A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go unclosed?
No.
Second, for discussion, cast your vote, please. All right, we're now in closed session.